Good evening, it's now six oh five and I apologize for being late. I will call this meeting of the Board of Selectmen for March nineteenth to order. We are coming to you from the Senior Center at twenty-nine Forest Street. If you would all stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And if you would stay standing for just one more second, I would like to ask for a moment of silence. North Brookfield lost an icon this week in Dr. Grace's passing, so if you would just join me in a moment of silence, I'd appreciate that. Very good, thank you so much.
He delivered me.
Did he? Oh my goodness. All right, first order of business is approval of minutes from March fifth. I'll entertain a motion to approve those minutes as written.
So moved, second.
Motion to make a second, all in favor?
Aye.
I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes from March twelfth.
So moved, second.
Motion to make a second, all in favor?
Aye.
And I will abstain because I was absent from most of that meeting. Next order of business, approval of warrants. I'll entertain a motion to approve debt warrant number one zero four four for one million eight hundred and two thousand five hundred and sixty-six dollars and fifteen cents. School warrant number one zero four five for sixty thousand five hundred and twenty-one dollars and ninety-seven cents. General warrant number one oh four six for one hundred and twenty-eight thousand one hundred and three dollars and forty-seven cents. And payroll warrant number nineteen for three hundred and twenty-eight thousand nine hundred and twenty-four dollars and thirty-nine cents.
So moved, second.
Motion to make a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, next order of business, financial items. The Mass Department of Transportation, Chapter Ninety funds. Want to read that for me?
Dear Chair of Board of Selectmen Dela Kylie, we are pleased to inform you that Chapter Ninety local transportation aid funding for fiscal year two thousand twenty will total two hundred million dollars statewide pending final legislative approval. This letter certifies that pending final passage of the bond authorization, your community's Chapter Ninety apportionment for fiscal year two thousand twenty is three hundred and nine thousand eight hundred and eighty-four dollars. This apportionment will automatically be incorporated into your existing ten-year Chapter Ninety contract, which will be available on the Mass DOT website. The Chapter Ninety program is an integral part of maintaining and enhancing your community's infrastructure and is an essential component of our state-local partnership. We look forward to working with you in the coming year to continue the success of this program. Thank you for all that you do to make the Commonwealth of Massachusetts a great place to live, work, and raise a family. Sincerely, Charles Baker, Governor Karen Pleato.
Do we have to vote to accept them or they just come in, right?
Yeah.
We're good. Do we know how that much that is in relation to past numbers? Is that more?
I think it's right around where it was. For some reason, three fourteen rings a bell, so.
Excellent. All right, next, financial items. Kristen DePass from the School Committee. Thanks.
Thank you for meeting. I'm Kristen DePass. I'm the Secretary of the North Brookfield School Committee. We recently held a public forum on the state funding and how there is such a discrepancy between how much aid rural towns and schools like ours receive compared to major cities like Worcester and Fall River and Lawrence. Basically, it boils down to our students receive about twenty dollars per student, which is the bare minimum that the state will give to a town compared to a city like Worcester that receives about six hundred dollars per student. So as part of that forum, we wrote a letter that we're sending to the Joint Committee on Education, and it's basically just kind of raising our voice to let them know in Boston that we're out here, we exist, and towns like ours that don't have, you know, the tax base to support the schools like major cities and major towns do, how it's such a burden on our small town to try to make up the difference when, you know, there's more that could be done from the state. So there are a few different items up for consideration in the legislature right now that would greatly help towns and cities like ours that don't get much, that would greatly improve our funding. So we're just looking for signatures from townspeople, even people who support the school, so it's okay if you don't live in town. If you would like to sign your name and be one of the voices that's heard, please reach out to me or one of the other school committee members. We'll be happy to collect your signature and we'll be sending it along shortly. So thank you for your time and.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Did you guys do anything, any online one? Like the solar? You guys had an online one?
Yeah, you can do something online. I'm sure the School Committee could probably do that, put an online signature page. Let's see, why not?
Okay, do you know how, like which, is there like a website you go through or?
I would ask Elizabeth Millatt about that because her brother-in-law is kind of, he's going to kill me for volunteering, but he's sort of a computer wizard and he's the one that helped us with ours. So you might want to talk to her about that, but I think that's a really good idea. The more you have, the more access you have, the more signatures you're going to get, names.
Absolutely, thank you so much.
Do they have to be verified?
It didn't, I don't, I don't really have the answer to that. I guess not.
Okay, you would definitely want to have.
Yeah, I mean, we definitely want.
And the address.
Yes, so we have a spot for your signature, your printed name, and your address.
There you go.
So yes, it'd be verified in that sense.
Right.
So it doesn't necessarily have to be somebody living in town or.
Yeah, like you're not going to give it to the clerk to verify everybody.
Oh, yeah.
It can be.
Because, you know, somebody's not writing down Abraham Lincoln.
Yes, no, of course, of course. Yes, we've collected these signatures personally, so at least you know who they're coming from.
Excellent.
If you want to bring it over here, I'll sign.
Absolutely, yes I do.
There you go.
All right, thank you so much.
Again, if anybody has a connection to their reps or their senators, you should make a phone call because the Chapter Seventy money that comes to the town helps offset the cost of the school and it's really a budget breaker, the money that we're giving to the school, so worth a phone call. Okay, anything else? Nope.
I believe the legislature's hearing is this Friday, so that's.
Yeah, it's going to get in. Yep. So, on to old business, CMR PC traffic count. Is there anything we need to do with that? We're still waiting for feedback from the different departments, right?
Yeah, yeah, well, that's again.
Just send out a last-minute reminder and then what do we have to do with it? Give it to the.
Give it to them, yep.
Okay.
Were we looking for four more streets or something to do?
Right.
Well, we sent it out to highway, police.
And the downtown development people too. I thought maybe they'd want to know how many people a day drive past the town hall or whatever.
Yeah.
Yep.
So just follow up with them and we'll be ready to send that out. Next is the landfill solar lease option agreement. And I did go through it and I talked to, well, I tried to call Chris Olson, he didn't call me back. There are a few things that need to be addressed in here, but the short of it is, we can terminate the agreement at any time prior to reaching the formal lease agreement. Ten thousand dollars per year for the three-year that they, they're going to encumber it, so it's ten thousand dollars a year to option it.
That they're giving us?
They're giving us ten thousand a year to.
Whether we use them or not?
Exactly, yep. For the amount of time that the lease option is active, so if we, if we terminate the agreement, say next year we terminate the agreement.
Yep.
We're not going to get the ten thousand for the next two years, obviously, but if it's still an option going forward, it's ten thousand dollars a year to hold it open for them, so we're getting paid for it. They note that we disclosed that it was contaminated, that one four dioxide problem, but they do not put in here anything about the DEP needing to certify it, so we need to talk to them about that. It says, "Accept as disclosed in writing," and it's not disclosed in writing, so I have a concern that it's not in the document. Then Section Eight, we have to assist them with getting permits and going to local and state authorities, which conceivably would be the DEP issue, and it says that that's at no cost to the town. So if they need to do anything with the DEP to certify it, once they option it, they're paying for it under Section Eight. But I want them to specifically identify in here that the DEP certification.
They hold the key right there.
Yeah, yep. And the rest of it's just boilerplate stuff, it's not problematic, but I do have a call in to Chris Olson to straighten out those, and they reference the state of New Jersey a couple of times in here, which obviously does not apply, so they're going to have to correct the language.
It was kind of a form letter they sent us.
Yeah, I just, they can change a few things, but.
That's why I wanted to meet them, if we could, if we could hash this stuff out.
Yeah, you talked to him, right? What did he say about coming out to?
Site visit.
Do the site visit and?
He said it's, usually they don't come out until after they have the signed lease option, just for their, that's just the way they do it. He said he would look into when they could come up and maybe combine it with some other things they have to do up here.
Yeah, but it also says, the other thing that you were asking about was the specific portion of it, because we're not going to give them the whole thing, right?
That's why they need to look at it, because they're taking a picture from the sky and it doesn't show you what's actually on top of the cap.
Right, but this is the option, which they're going to do their due diligence from, so you enter into the option agreement, and both sides have a period of time where they can get out before the written agreement. And they do say that they're going to lease only a portion, and it's a specific portion, so we're not giving them the whole thing, and they'll identify exactly what portion. But when they do their due diligence, they're going to see what they can put it on, and of course, you're going to say, not that far over, right?
They can only go so far.
Right, so.
That's what the site visit would have taken care of, there wouldn't be this back and forth, you know?
All right, well, I'll talk to him again, he's, I have a call in to him, see if we can get them here and.
Yep.
Talk to him about those issues. Okay, yes ma'am?
You knew I'd type up here probably. Well, I, you know, I would just say in support of your working on this, you know that old saying, fool me once, shame on you, fool me twice, shame on me. We don't want to get in a situation where you guys put your best foot forwards before they really put their feet on the ground and really seen what's what down there, because I mean, that, you know, I have to agree with John on that, if you're, you know, let's face it, Google Earth is not walking around the, so I think it'd probably be wise to hold their feet to the fire and say, we're not comfortable, you know, doing a whole lot with you until we know you've actually really seen this, then maybe we'll put some pen to paper and we'll get this DEP thing and all that stuff going. I'd just be real careful with that.
Yeah.
Because they're all the same, they all come in with these, you know, roses and flowers and everything's going to be wonderful and it's not always wonderful, so I'd be real careful.
Yeah, and we're in a different financial spot right now than we were a few years ago, so we're in no hurry to.
Yeah, so you don't have to kowtow to them on any level, so, and you don't have to have John walking around chucking lights, putting lights back on, so. So no, but I would, I just, I just say, you know, we're not signing anything until you get your feet out here and take a look at this.
Yep, so we'll, we'll get them, I'll get them on the phone, see if we can get them out here.
I'll call them for you if you don't.
We're trying to.
The next item is the request to purchase Buxton Hill Road. Did you go out and look at that at all yet?
No, but I talked to the assessors and they don't know if we own that road, so we can't sign off that, we can sell it to them if we don't own it, because it's.
Why aren't they sure we own it? Everybody said we owned it.
But they were looking, Lisa and Sheila ripped out all kinds of paperwork the other day. It shows an abandoned road, but it doesn't show ownership, they couldn't find a deed. There was a right-of-way there, but they couldn't find that North Brookfield actually owns it, so they were going to keep looking. So I told them I didn't want to go down there if I'm going to be trespassing on someone's property, because the Audubon locked it off on this lady that bought the pond up top, so she can't get up there.
Right, yeah.
But she should have access to it.
Yeah, well, Audubon says that the town, told her that the town owned it.
But they shouldn't have right to lock the lady off that just bought the property.
They don't, she can change the law too.
Yeah, that's.
But then Audubon can't, there's, so there's a little bit of conflict right there on the road thing.
Yeah, I don't know why Audubon would put a lock on a road. If they're saying the town owns it, then.
Right, it's an access road for them and for her, I don't know what their beef was, I don't know.
And that road apparently goes from the Brookfield Road all the way over to Slab City Road, so we would own through that parcel also, all the way through. Not that we're going to use the road again, but if you sell it to one person, it knocks the other person out for access.
No.
Audubon, well, they could always put another one in for themselves.
You sell it with the easement, so they have the right to pass a repass, but doesn't necessarily knock them out, but there are issues with abandoning a road. If the town had it and we abandoned it, then there's a statute called the derelict fee statute where it separates in the middle of the road and it goes to either side. If Audubon owns all that property, then they would just absorb it, so it would be an issue.
And that would landlock that lady.
And she would get an easement, yeah.
If they give her one, right?
No.
Though they have to.
No, if you're landlocked and you had an easement, then the easement would go with it, but it's a lot of, it's a lot of legal stuff, so we got to find out.
Sheila and Lisa were working on it, I talked to them yesterday morning, I don't know if they, as soon as they dig something up.
Okay.
She said she'd let me know, then we can decide if we can, can or should sell it.
Well, if she contacts you, if Jennifer contacts you, tell her that we're looking into it and we're trying to be diligent about it and.
The assessors are having at it.
I don't think anybody's opposed to selling it back to her, right?
No.
Anybody opposed to it?
You're not opposed to it if it's.
No, we just got to know.
Right, yeah.
I just didn't want to sign something that we didn't know anything about.
So in principle, we're not opposed to it, we just got to find out the legal ramifications and who we stand. All right, February police report.
I took a walk up there today, I went to the road to start with.
Oh, is it?
Definitely four-wheel drive thing.
Oh, cart path type of deal?
Kind of a cart path, I mean, it's big blocks and, I mean, the part that's on Audubon land, there's a part that breaks off that goes to the part that was the Brookfield reservoir, which is posted, but the main road, and it kind of just, kind of disappears up the hill, doesn't really go over the other side as far as I can tell. I just, I hope she, you know, if she does get access to the road, if she's got some vehicle that can manage that.
Well, she bought the pond up top, the land with the pond, so.
But Brookfield had an easement for that, to get there?
We don't know.
Did it access to the pond?
We don't know, because it's, that's parts in Brookfield.
They had easement from the other side?
I guess, I don't know.
Yeah, I don't know that anybody's researched the deed back, but.
Because it doesn't look really, very accessible from the other side, that's what I'm saying. Accessible, it's much closer to the North Brookfield side, and it's seen, that part of road, even though it's pretty well deteriorated, it's better than the road when you start going up over the hill.
Maybe I'll walk up this Saturday, I'll go up in sandy morning, just so we know, but I was going to wait until the assessors actually gave me what it was.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't know, you know, Brookfield had records on if they had an easement to it.
Well, they were going to look into that stuff, so.
Yeah, it should be somewhere. You don't have it in your stack-up paperwork?
It's a historical road, you think.
I don't, I don't even know how long it's been abandoned, to tell you the truth.
Nineteen thirty-seven.
Thirty-seven, it was abandoned?
Yep.
Oh, macro.
It was, it was sold, I mean, Blanche Means transferred in ninety-six, and it was all, it was just Elmo Farm, the assets, Elmo Farm. You know, you can see it was originally an old, it was the stone walls are, you know, like thirty-five yards apart, so you can see it was for driving cattle down the road at the time, but, I mean, there's nothing else there except Elmo Farm, so it was.
Yeah, well, we'll definitely have to research it.
You saw anything else besides access to the farm and the pond, I mean, I don't know how long the pond was there.
But these people bought the pond, right? They bought the, so they must have access somehow through there some way, so.
We just don't want to lock somebody out by doing something wrong.
Yeah, I just think in Brookfield must have had an easement to get to the pond, huh?
Yeah, well, it's got to be on the deed for the pond, whether Brookfield owned it or somebody else owned it, the pond, there was a deed that incorporated the pond area and the easement must go with that deed access.
Would it follow with the deed?
Yeah, it always follows the easement, yep.
But, you know, the whole, Serang was sold in ninety-six, it's like ten and a half acres where the pond was sold off to Brookfield and Les was donated to Audubon side, I believe the pond was actually, it was just a dollar transfer.
Do you know who owned it, that gave it to Brookfield?
Yeah, Elmo Farm, it was the Means, Blanche Means was the last owner.
Oh, the Means Spencer and the Means family?
The Means family.
So if the, if the, if the, if the right-of-way passed with the deed, then she doesn't have to buy it.
Right, should be on her deed, let it do.
So.
Yep.
That they work out for her too, right?
She's got to have the deed if she closed on it, so.
She does, she does have an easement on it, but she wants to own it, she wants to buy it.
She wants to buy it?
Yep.
Okay, so we have to, yeah, we may have to send that one through Town Council, because there's a lot of issues with that, so.
Right.
All right, we'll look into that further. All right, February police report, John, I want to read the police report.
The monthly report for February two thousand nineteen. Lieutenant Ryan Daly attended advanced law enforcement rapid response training held in Marlboro. This was a five-day train-the-trainer-instructor course. This training is an active attack integrated response for police, fire, and EMS/ICS for the active shooter event. Participants were instructed on the methods of integrating all three services during an active shooter event. Officer Richard Karen and Officer Jeff Martin attended sex trafficking issues and indications. This training was, this training was provided by the Massachusetts State Police at the Fusion Center in Maynard. This was a no-cost training that provided the, bless you, that provided the officers with the knowledge of recognizing potential sex and human trafficking victims. I was informed that the Massachusetts State Police had assigned the North Brookfield Police Department to receive a new Lives Cam system. I have begun the process, this is Chief Smith, I have become the process, begun the process of providing the paperwork so that the integration process can begin. This equipment, if purchased, would cost approximately sixteen thousand dollars, and the only cost to the department will be for the software upgrades to the current records management system. Once this equipment is installed, it will give the department the ability to scan fingerprints and submit them directly to the Massachusetts State Police as well as the FBI at the time the officer is conducting the booking process. This equipment will be utilized during the processing of license-to-carrys and renewals, allowing for immediate submission and potentially reducing the wait time for approving licenses. In February, we received, we received seven thousand six hundred and forty-two dollars reimbursement grant from the Executive Office of Public Safety and Security, Office of Grants and Research, Highway Safety Division, to improve traffic safety on local roads for pedestrians and bicyclists. Under the grant, the department will pay for overtime enforcement to increase compliance with traffic laws by all road users. We will also purchase educational materials, bicycle helmets, and safety items to help enhance pedestrian and bicyclist visibility at night. The following incidents were logged for February two thousand nineteen. Thirty-seven incidents, thirteen arrests, summons, and custody, twenty-five civil citations, three parking tickets, zero protection, seven accidents, ten license-to-carry FIDs processed. Respectfully submitted, Mark L. Smith, Chief of Police.
An entertaining motion to accept the February report of the police chief.
So moved, second.
Motion to make a second, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Water Department Weed Control Contract. Is this something we need to sign or just?
Yep.
Review contract, is this an every-year thing?
Yes.
Any opposition to executing the contracts?
Nope, we do it every year, the same people do the same, they're treating the water up there.
Yeah, and it just needs to be signed by us because we're the procurement people, so.
Nope, I'm good with it.
So I guess I'll entertain a motion to approve contract signing?
So moved, second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Friends of the townhouse, request to use the townhouse. Anybody from the friends here?
Well, I'm a member of that kind of stuff, they want to have an open house during the base, base celebration, to expand the whole, the foundation, some motion to the townhouse, you know, going on, and they're wondering if they could do a tour of the Great Hall like they've done with the school children and stuff, that's basically it.
Yeah, Jim Buzzell and I opened it up last year on this chicken barbecue day to people, but it wasn't well advertised and nobody really went in, but if you're going to advertise it and let people in.
That's basically what they.
Yeah, same deal, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Are we insured, Kate, to have a small tour?
Yep, it's, the building is safe and proved. We do have insurance on that, right? Some insurance?
Woods of London.
Yep, oh, that's right, Woods of London. And it's, it's limited to going in and seeing the Great Hall and the plaque and stuff like that, yep.
Just the hall, the stairway and all.
Yep, no place else.
Yep.
So I would entertain a motion to approve that for the friends?
So moved, second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
What's this? Oh, these are all different things. Okay, so, Lake Lashway Association.
We are here.
There you go, floor is yours.
So our objective tonight was just to come meet you, have you meet us. We are an active group of people trying to preserve our lake that is between both halves, right? So we have an executive committee that was voted in in two thousand seventeen, Roger Babinski, who is not here, Jacob Caprera is our co-vice president with Roger, or co-president, I'm the vice president, Sue Button is our treasurer, and Kathleen is our secretary. And I wish they could all be here to meet you, but they can't. So I guess we just want to tell you a little bit about what we're doing. We said, when we, when we first met, we put four priorities together. We want to improve the water quality at Lashway, we want to improve or increase the safety at the lake, we want to maintain and increase residential participation in our activities, and we want to make sure that we can communicate with our membership. So we've set up a website to do that, you're invited to look for lashway.com, right? If you're interested. We've got an active membership development committee that's meeting at my house tonight, and we've, we signed a contract with a group called ESS to. I'm the vice president, Sue Button is our treasurer, and Kathleen is our secretary. And I wish they could all be here to meet you, but, uh, they can't. So, I guess we just wanna tell you a little bit about what we're doing. We said, when we, when we first met, we put four priorities together. Uh, we wanna improve the water quality at, uh, Lashway. We wanna improve or increase the safety at the lake. We wanna maintain and increase residential participation in our activities, and we wanna make sure that we can communicate with our membership. So, uh, we've set up a mem-, uh, a website to do that. You're invited to look for lashway.com, right? If you're interested. We've got an active membership development committee that's meeting at my house tonight. And we've, we signed a contract with a group called ESS to come do a study and make some recommendations for us going forward. So, you know, we've met with East Brookfield now twice, uh, so that's why we're here, just to keep you guys informed. And, um, East Brookfield manages the drawdown, so we wanna make sure that that continues on the lake. And the study indicated that we have some issues upstream with minerals coming into the lake, so we, we wanna learn a little bit more about that. We need to, we need to educate the people on the lake as to, uh, how to manage things like geese, how to manage things like lawn care, uh, so we're gonna be doing that. And, and we have to, we have to manage runoff, uh, as, as indicated by this study. So, that's the water that comes from the watershed into the lake. So those are the issues that we're sort of, uh, working on. What we've done is, uh, we've contracted with the ESS right now to, uh, apply for a six oh four B grant. That grant would allow us to, uh, assess the watershed, develop, uh, a plan to, uh, capture water coming into the lake from the surrounding roads and, and the watershed itself. It would, it would give us an indication of what we needed to do going forward, and, uh, it would allow us an, a route to seek funding moving forward. So by March twenty-ninth, we need to have that application in, uh, to the DEP. So we're letting you know that we're proceeding with that. Our sponsor is, uh, East Brookfield, so they will manage the contractual arrangements with whatever subcontractors, uh, are used to do the studies and come up with plans. And that's pretty much it. I put together an appendix that tells you a little bit about, uh, what you have to go through to, uh, file for a six oh four B grant, and then what the responsibilities are of the town moving forward. So, that's where we're at.
Excellent.
We do have all that information available if you guys were interested in, in getting, get hands on that information. We have the ESS lake study, we have information on the grant, et cetera. If you guys, you know, wanted an email or something like that, so you could look through things, just to...
Yeah, I think, uh, if you have it, if you could forward it to us.
Copy of the, the study and the grant application in draft form to Leslie tomorrow.
Oh, great, thanks. Yeah, probably get some good information.
Yeah.
Sure.
I mean, yeah, and that's the, the general purpose here, we wanna keep you in the loop.
We appreciate that.
Good.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming in, nice meeting you. Our state rep is in the house tonight. Do you need any FaceTime?
I haven't been a while, see if you guys had any questions or, uh, I'm gonna do the Ways and Means hearing, so I haven't had a chance to get up. I try to get here once in a while, but...
Well, I'm sure Kristen here has a few questions.
Oh, um, well, we have a letter that we put together from that, um, forum that we had.
Yep.
Um, that we're going to be sending in, um, obviously shortly, because the meeting is on Friday. Um, I don't know if you had any, like, updates on how those bills are kind of going, or, you know?
So we'll know Friday, uh, most of the hearings are Friday, and expect it to be crowded. Are you, are any of you guys going?
Um...
If you're gonna go, get there early, 'cause...
Yeah, I think Elizabeth's husband might be able to go, 'cause unfortunately, none of us, yeah, Ethan should be going, I think. I think he's going, I'm not sure. I don't know if she had an answer from him yet, but, um, yeah, unfortunately, I think.
Yeah.
But, yeah.
This, so you, the, all those bills, you know, the chapter seventy review stuff, it's like five or six this Friday. So it's gonna be a long hearing, I expect. But if you plan on testifying, you gotta get there early, 'cause it's first come, first served basis. So if you're the last one to sign up, you're probably gonna be testifying at six o'clock, um, tomorrow night. They, they let us go out of turn, which is a good thing, so I plan on going to testify, and I know Ann is, and, uh, mo- most of the reps and senators from out here in the rural area. We did have Ways and Means hearing at Bristol Community College, yes, yesterday. So many, sorry, um, with the education secretary, and actually Lieutenant Governor Kane. So I think that the big thing, um, 'cause even if we do this chapter seventy thing, it's not gonna be for a little while. So this year, the budget, we're pushing for the rural funding, for rural schoo- schools. You didn't get any last year, because there were, it was twenty students per mile?
Yeah, it was like we just missed out when we were like twenty-seven or something. Yeah, it was like so close.
Um, so what we're doing, and, and I gotta give credit to Senator Adam Hines from Pittsfield, he's really gr- he's the one that, um, started this last year, brought every light to everybody. Uh, Wisconsin does this to give an extra chunk of change to the rural districts, but, 'cause we have all the challenges, you know, the low income, yeah, all the other problems that other districts have, except you can't really regionalize a lot of stuff, because everybody's so far away. You know, transportation's higher, and, um, so we brought that up to Secretary Pies, but he was open to it. That bill's not on Friday, I don't think. I don't think that, is it?
I don't remember.
I don't think it is, I think that one's separate. So that's what we're looking at, and I will say this, we had a meeting at the high school, was it two weeks ago, a week ago? This year is the year for education, seemed, it seems, the end of last year was, but at the last minute, the conference committee couldn't come to an agreement on funding, so... Like Ann and I said the other night, this is, it's a good sign that they have this hearing so early. Usually hearings on big stuff like this don't start till the summer. So it means that everybody, you know, is, is, you know, wants to show movement on and get something done, so. So we'll see, we'll see, I mean, after Friday, we'll have a better feel, see what the committee does, if they report stuff out favorably, or if they change it. I imagine if they report it out, it's gonna come to the floor, floor quick, so, so we'll see.
Does any of that impact the charter school?
Well, the governor's proposal, um, in his budget, and so, and the budget's fluid right now, because we're just doing the hearings. Um, you'll get a better indicator, we do it the week after April vacation, the House budget. And usually towns, I mean, that's what we used to do in Spencer, we would use that number from the House budget. Those educational and local, I, I'm, I'm gonna go out on a limb and say that the, uh, local aid number, unrestricted local aid, that usually stays the same. Um, when the governor came in, he said he would increase that every year, whatever the increase in the consensus revenue figure was. And this, last year was three point seven four, some, this year it's two point eight. So that's, that's always stayed the same the four years I've been in, but also the four years I've been, we've pumped up the education, um, component every year. We've bumped it up, and the Senate's bumped it up even more, so, um, that's all fluid right now, so. That's what we used in Spencer, we would take the governor's number, do a rough figure with the budget, I don't know if you guys do the same, and then we would amend that, whatever the House number came out as, which is a little higher, so you get a better idea. So that'll be last week in April, right before everybody's, well, you waited for your town meeting last year, would you do the money articles in June, right?
June, yeah, we usually put them off till June.
Yeah, so you'll have actually the Senate numbers by then, because they could do, they do the budget in May, where April, then they take our budget and then do their thing to it.
Yeah, we do all the budgeting, though, before the May meeting, so then between May and June, we just make adjustments.
Right, right.
Based on...
Yeah, if you continue the town meeting, it gives you the option to change whatever you want. So, I mean, end of April, have a better idea, but, but what we should know, see how fast the committee kicks that stuff out after Friday. They kick it out right away, you know, then... I, I imagine they wanna bring it to the floor, uh, floors in the House and the Senate quick, because the conference committees, sometimes they... I mean, I was in environmental conference committee, we did it three meetings, but that one, they met for months, and they were meeting eleven o'clock on July thirty-first, but they just couldn't come to an agreement, so.
And do you know how many school districts out this way are, um, like, single-town, like North Brookfield is, it's a school?
Two, I have you guys and Ware. Um, I don't think too many, I don't think there's too many, you know?
Well, I don't, like, we're in Lester, we're ourselves as well, Lester is by itself.
As far as my, my, all mine's regional, except for you guys and Ware.
Yeah, 'cause it's a unique problem, I mean, we don't have anybody to split costs with and stuff like that, so we bear it all. Uh, and it's things like busing, uh, because we're not a district, we don't get any busing covered. So, that's a huge whack out of the towns.
I mean, last year, we did get the, which didn't help you guys, but the regional, uh, transportation reimbursement was up to eighty, that was the highest it's ever been. And like I said, the rural aid, rural aid was pretty good, Tantasc, they got a lot of money for Wales and... Quap got some for the Braintree, Peterson was some, um... So we're, we're gonna kick that up, I was actually talking to Senator Hines today at the Ways and Means hearing. It's, I think it's eight million, or eight point one million to fully fund that, to get to the forty student, and that will cover all my towns, but... So, so we'll see, I think that's, that's the way, that's the way to go, to get it done quick. I mean, 'cause if we can get that in the budget as a, uh, an outside section, a line item, then it will be done this year. Because if the, the, the chapter seventy stuff passes, it's still trying to fund it, it's a lot of money, so.
So, is this letter gonna ask for specific towns like ourselves to get money that the, the regional school districts get?
That's Chris.
Because we're, because we don't belong to a, you know, a, a dis- uh, uh, other schools? Is this letter supposed to be helping us get more than twenty dollars per kid?
So the rural aid will do that. So last year, what did we bump it to forty bucks a kid? I think after the Senate...
Still twenty that we were getting.
Not last year, so last year...
Yeah, I'm trying to remember last year's, 'cause this current year was like twenty.
We bumped a lot of stuff up in that. The rural aid's the good one. See, that, that doesn't matter if you're regional, or if you have your standalone district, everybody gets it, so. Wait, if you're under that forty student per square mile, which you guys are.
Yeah, which we would definitely be.
You're, yeah, you're twenty-something.
Yeah, we were like just, we just missed it.
That was one, one point eight million. Eight would, would do the forty. Forty per square mile, so.
Thanks. Anybody got anything else that they would like to?
Yeah, uh, there's also some move on, I don't know how far it's getting so far, but to revamp the chapter ninety formula, to try to go more, get a little more per miles, instead of just the, the formula they're using. You know, it's like, you know, it's like, seems like every five years, Worcester's redoing their main street, and it's like, when have we re-done our main street?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm sure that's something that Selectman can, uh, support, and I hope that gets somewhere, because we do have a lot of miles on the roads here.
The prob- the problem with chapter ninety, so every year, we do the chapter ninety, and they just did it, um, on transportation committee. And the Senate wanted to do two years, which would be great, the problem is, with that money, we, we come to our bond cap. You know, you have a cap, and we have to, there's all kinds of stuff you gotta go through to raise that, and no, nobody has any interest in raising that, so... It would be nice to do a two-year thing for planning, but, um, yeah, so... Yeah, and I understand, yeah, but the problem is, is that's bonded money, that's money we borrow and pay back with gas tax, or whatever, or every year, and so there's...
Yeah, but wasn't there an idea, try to redo the formula, so maybe like Worcester'd get a little less, and we'd get a little more, because we have, you know, so many roads, and, you know, just mileage-wise, and, and the formula kinda tucks towards the city.
It's all done by mile mostly.
Yeah, but...
The problem with, I, I didn't hear that, given someone else, I've heard to change the formula to give each one more, but then again, we're up against that bond cap, so... The transportation committee starts having hearings, there's usually a bunch of hearings on that every year, so, well, I could, I could more info than...
Yeah, I forget exactly where I saw that, but, you know?
I haven't heard that, I mean, it could be...
Maybe it was in the Springfield paper or something, but...
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't hear the less and more thing, but it could be, it could be.
You know, like I said, I mean, you know, it seems like, you know, you have cities that are constantly redoing their main streets, and it doesn't seem quite fair that, you know, we just barely, you know, get up to do a couple miles worth of road, and they're, you know, putting, you know, new lamps and fences up and all this other stuff, you know, every... Seems like, you know, new brick sidewalks, if brick sidewalks fall apart after five years, so they, you know, got a whole bunch more money and redid them, you know?
A lot of that's tip money, that comes through the federal government, so that's a match through state, but that's not chapter ninety money, like Spencer's downtown, they just redid, that was tip money. So it's a, I don't know if it's a fifty-fifty match from the federal government, and it comes out of DOT's budget, but that, you know, it's a long process to get on the tip and...
Yeah, we got a downtown development committee we put together to address that, and come up with a plan, and try to chase some money.
And I know Braintree's, um, on the tip for sixty-seven. Because they, they, East Brookfield, to their credit, like Route Nine, they never accepted it as a town road, so the state still fixes it. But everybody, you know, up here, Braintree, you guys, everybody accepted like sixty-seven as a town road. So, Braintree Selectman had called me, um, about trying to get the state to take it back over, and I can have...
Yeah, you can't unring it.
Yeah, if I, I could find out about that, I haven't heard that, but I'll try to find out.
Kate, anything else?
Similar type question, I know the last couple of years, we picked a couple of roads every year to be repaved. What's, where are we gonna get this year?
Good question. I think we need to hear from the highways in front of them. Uh, he picks the roads, he prioritizes, um, and I haven't heard anything from him, so I'll send him an email, ask him to come in and give us a report and what he plans to do, now that he's got the chapter ninety money. We'll get a plan from him, so, um, at the next meeting, we'll take that up.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else? All right. I'll take that as the public comment period. Although Sue was quite quiet.
Oh, she's on my birthday list.
All right, announcements, election update?
North Brookfield's annual town election will be Monday, May sixth, here at Twenty-nine Fourth Street, the senior center, from seven AM to eight PM. The offices and incumbents are selectmen for three years, Dale Kylie will seek reelection, papers returned, moderator, three years. Jim Caldwell will seek reelection, papers are returned, town clerk for three years. Sheila Buzzell will not seek reelection, assessor for three years, Sheila Buzzell will seek reelection and papers are returned. School committee, three years, Megan Cludier, there's no written response, so that will be a write-in on the ballot. Water commissioner for three years, James Klaraski will not seek reelection. Board of health for three years, Trevor Brusso will seek reelection, papers are returned. Board of health for one year, it's BB, Pierre Mariney resigned. Cemetery commission, three years, um, Jason Petritas took papers out, they weren't returned. There'll be a write-in on the ballot. Constable for three years is three, Dennis Trello will seek reelection, papers are returned. Ron Ryle, there was no written response, and Tim Nason will seek reelection, papers are returned. So that third one will probably be a write-in on the ballot as well. Library trustees, there are two for three years. Richard Miller will not seek reelection, and Margaret Bodine will seek reelection, papers are returned. Planning board for five years, William King will seek reelection, papers are returned. Planning board, uh, two years, Dane Falinger resigned. Playground committee, three years, Joseph Jablonski resigned, that will be a write-in on the ballot. Housing authority for five years, um, Ron Ryle, no written response. All registration sessions and filing of nomination papers will take place at the town clerk's office, two fifteen Main Street. Last day to file nomination papers was yesterday. Last day to object or withdraw is Wednesday, April third. Up until five PM, the last day to register to vote for the annual town election and annual town meeting is Tuesday, April sixteenth, between nine AM and eight PM. Other papers taken out and returned, Tara Hayes for town clerk. Bob Locatelli for board of health for one year. John Turner for planning board, two years. David Maher, junior, library trustee, three years. Scott Bombard, water commissioner, three years. Sue Lyons, planning board, for two years. Mary Dolan, housing authority, for five years, and Michael Splain, constable, for three years.
All right. Dog licenses are now available at the town clerk's office, Tuesday and Thursday, from twelve to three, Tuesday evening, five to eight. You can get it through the mail, just make sure you send a self-addressed stamped envelope to get the, uh, the paperwork and the tag back. Fees are eight dollars for spayed or neutered, twelve dollars otherwise. Uh, late fees per household will be five dollars after June first, and twenty-five dollars after September first. Uh, late fees per household will be five dollars after June first and twenty-five dollars after September first. I'm gonna do the planning board first.
Uh, the North Brookfield planning board will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, March twentieth, two thousand nineteen, at seven fifteen PM at the senior center, twenty-nine Forest Street, North Brookfield, Mass. This hearing will be on the application of Jordan Energy and Food Enterprises, L L C, on behalf of Rodney Carlson for the land situated on fifty-five Westbrookfield Road regarding a special permit and site plan review for the proposed two-megawatt solar facility per zoning bylaw, section six F, commercial solar energy bylaw, and sexual, section six G, site plan review. Any person interested in or wishing to be heard on this application should appear at the above-stated time and place. A description of the proposed solar project is on file at the office of the town clerk, two fifteen North Main Street, North Brookfield, Mass. Uh, this is from Bill King, the chair of the planning board.
All right. And your rail trail update?
Today, this Tuesday, March nineteenth, two thousand nineteen, the North Brookfield Railroad Company is announcing the restart of the rail trail clearing project. On Sunday, April seventh, two thousand nineteen, we will begin heading south from Conwarren Road down to Route nine in East Brookfield. We have walked the trail to the south and although it is a longer stretch, the center portion is not filled with brush and briars as much as the north end. We should be able to get through this end in a short amount of time. All those interested in helping, helping are welcome. At this time, we are also looking for donations to help pay for fuel and supplies. We had somebody offer to match a donation of a thousand dollars with his thousand dollars. That would be great, uh, but anything is, is appreciated. We believe the rail trail walking, hiking, biking path will be a great asset to our town and to East Brookfield. Some people drive miles to go for a walk. We can start right from Elm Street and go four miles. After the trail is clear of brush, debris, and encroachments, we will be applying for grants to complete the project. John Tripp, that's me, is leading the clearing group. You can reach me at my home phone, uh, after six PM most evenings, and I'm in the phone book. Thank you, the North Brookfield Railroad.
All right. And last announcement, the auctions, wanna read that, Jason?
This is a town auction, town ordered auction. There are three properties, um, that got taken in tax title. That will be, um, auctioned off on Tuesday, April sixteenth at noon time. It'll be held at the police station at fifty-five School Street. And those are twenty-nine Hillsville, Spencer Road, farmhouse on eight point nine acres, fifty-seven Gilbert Street, it's a three-family dwelling, and thirteen Okam Road, it's a single-family home on one forty-eight.
Are there more descriptions on this website? Is ecoscript dot com? Do they go into more descriptions or is it the same information?
Yeah, not a whole lot. I mean, I think the property record cards are on there that you can at least look up the, you know, property card.
Yeah. Um, and we're gonna do a, um, we're gonna open them up for people to look at at some point?
Yep.
An hour before, hour before the auctioneer.
Yep.
Excuse me, the auctioneer will have somebody there to let you into each property, uh, one hour before to, to look at it, so...
All right. Excellent. Tax title, that's everything. Anybody got anything else?
I went and put padlocks on the doors, the plywood off the doors, put the padlocks on for the auctioneer guys.
Oh, okay, good.
Ann has the keys.
All right. Anything else? Anything? No, anything?
No, I think we're good.
Where do we stand with the pot? Man, the place down there, pot growing place.
As far as getting money or...
Yes, because they still haven't sold anything, correct?
Yeah, Charlton, their, their selling facility in Charlton still hasn't been opened yet.
Right.
Um, we took a tour, the selectmen and the police department were all brought over there for a tour. Uh, they're growing, uh, they're processing, and they're storing in a secure place inside the building, so the product is ready to go. They're just waiting for their outlet to be able to sell it. So, um, and I think they're selling some to other sellers, you know, other retailers. I think a certain percentage can go out to other retailers. So I would think, um, they keep pushing the date out. It was October and then it was December and now we're in March. So we don't have a firm date for their start yet, uh, as far as that goes.
You know where Charlton's staying, so open them up to go.
Well, um, last I heard, it, yeah, they, they approved and there, somebody else wanted to open up another one and Charlton told them, uh, green gold and another one of the only two that have been approved and that's their winner. So they, you know, one idea, and I know people live in Charlton and Google those videos and stuff and it's just... I don't know. They had, it looks like they had the fire department rescue squad over there a couple of weeks ago and did a walk through it too, so... I think it should be, should be in a week now.
Yeah, I mean, they're growing and they're, they're processing it and they're storing it. They have a third phase to the building that they're doing, um, cooking facility. And we were there, what were we there, a month ago?
A little over a month.
And they said two weeks they were gonna be done with that cooking facility and they were gonna be cooking items, but, uh, I doubt that's happened, so...
They did not have samples for us either.
Yeah.
I guess, um, question is...
When will we see the money?
They're supposed to give the town some money when they start to sell.
Yep.
So until that point, we're just still, still a promise.
Yes.
We haven't spent it yet because we don't have it.
Okay, that's a good...
We don't spend it.
Yeah, no, we haven't, uh, there are things we would like, you know, they're kinda earmarked that when the money comes in, this is what we plan to do, but, um, no money's come in. We haven't spent anything, we haven't, um... Yeah, nothing, nothing's gone out.
We're on hold for, until they start.
That's what I wanted to know.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah. Yes.
I'll tell you the special town meeting.
Special town meeting?
Yes, no idea.
Oh, that was from, that's leftover from previous agenda. We did take it off, so there's no special town meeting on the horizon. May, be the next one.
I did, uh, one other court thing, uh, I was gonna bring up forty, Court Guard Road. Apparently somebody's getting that on the warrant, right? It's in the process of getting on the warrant to, to play a town forest. So I'm assuming they know what they're doing for that process too. But there's also that little parcel, thirty, uh, Bowler Road, that little triangle over there next to rail trail.
Yeah.
I was wondering what your feelings on adding that to that proposal? Do you have any particular feelings on that?
Can that be added to the warrant or is that another, you have to do it again? There is a little triangle between the two roads there.
Yeah, we haven't announced a warrant yet, so any, anything could be put on the next one. That'll be May. Special time meeting right before the annual. When's the deadline to get anything in on that?
Wasn't that like the fifteenth or something? Can this have to be in already?
No.
No?
No.
Oh.
Yeah? For what?
For articles.
For the May?
New articles, not budget, not money, budget stuff, but new articles, yeah. Because you guys have to sign it. Ooh, you have to next, you have to sign the warrant.
Could they amend, did they send something?
Hmm?
Can they add that parcel to it or is it too late to do that?
We haven't signed it.
I mean, I mean, you guys even looked at that one? Do you know what it is, somebody?
I've, I've seen this on, I don't have it with me because when I, when I went through all the rail, the abutting properties to the rail trail, I did see that one. It'd be a great place for a parking area, I believe so, yeah. Yeah.
That's that little triangle where the schoolhouse market was that I'm in process of getting on.
I, I was thinking maybe a little parking area. Because that's like halfway between, you know, if you don't wanna walk the whole trail, you could park there. Uh, we actually did when we walked it, uh... Rick, yeah, you and I parked up, up in there, said parcel right to the left of it.
Okay.
Where we parked.
All right, yeah. I mean, it makes sense. It doesn't, it's not useful for almost anything else.
No.
So, um, yeah, we merge that.
We'll look into the adding that, uh, yeah, yeah. Maybe, uh, who, who wrote the...
Peter, dude.
Peter.
You need to take...
Maybe have Peter research that a little bit, I will too.
We can, we can go ahead.
All right, anything else? Anything else? We all good?
Yeah.
All right. If there's no further business, I'll have to take a motion to adjourn.
Second? More to me?
One second, we'll be...
Right.
Good night.